All right, we're gonna, we're gonna get started even though at least my computer's not working yet. So, we're gonna do it the old-fashioned way and I'm gonna flip to the binder. The Board Workshop of the Manatee County School District Board shall be called to order. And we, are there any amendments to the agenda for the workshop? Okay, hearing none. We'll show the agenda as adopted. We've got a number of speakers that have signed up. We have three primary issues that the Board is going to be workshopping. The first is the proposed changes to the Code of Conduct. The second is the discussion around the interim superintendent. The third is the reviewing the name nominations for the new elementary school in Parrish. And then if we have time, it will be a transportation overview. What I'm going to ask is that since we've got two significant items which probably have a number of speakers, is that the first open comment period, will those individuals that want to speak to either the proposed changes to the Code of Conduct or the interim superintendent, if you will speak during that public comment period? For those that want to address the naming nominations for the elementary school, if we will have another comment period right before we go to that issue? And that will help us kind of segue in between some very significant conversations that we're having today. So, with that being said, I'm gonna hold my opening comments related to the interim superintendent discussion for when we initiate that conversation. So, I will go ahead and turn over to Vice Chair Messenger the public comment period dealing specifically with the Code of Conduct changes and the interim superintendent.
I, I'm-
You won't know who the names are, so if you call them-
Typically, in the workshop, though, we do all public comment at one time.
I understand. I understand.
So, they're not divided out?
I understand. But today, we're going to do it that way.
Okay.
So, if you'll go call the name and then if, if they'll, they'll say that they're, wanna speak to the elementary school, then they will wait and, and come up.
Okay. I'm gonna read our public comment spiel. "Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not a forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board. This is a business meeting of the school board and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when you're making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The Board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments or on agenda items or during the public comment section." And with that, I will start with Jacqueline Lewis. Are you here for the naming of the school?
I'm speaking for the naming of the school.
Okay. Patricia Grimsley.
Naming of the school.
Lucille Mobley.
Naming of the school.
Shereen Gibson.
On behalf of the interim superintendent.
Okay, and that's, you want those now?
Yes, yes.
Come on down. And then after that will be Kimberley Organic. I figured.
That would be it.
She can't have a voice back.
Hold on just a second.
Good afternoon, Chairman Dr. Hope.
Wait for the clerk. Wait for the clerk. Ready? All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
What is your name?
My name is Shereen Gibson. Good afternoon, Chairman Dr. Hope, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Green, Ms. Saunders, Mr. Serrana, and staff. My name is Dr. Shereen Gibson. I began my career in this district 22 years ago as a teacher aide before becoming a National Board Certified Teacher and an Assistant Principal at Daughtry Elementary. I was then asked by Ms. Lynette Edwards to accompany Dr. Nichols to Tillman and turn it around as it was a school under restructuring by the state. I remained at Tillman as principal and left it as the 19th-best Title I school in the state before becoming a principal at Seabreeze to gain non-title experience. Later, I asked to transfer to Gullett and round out my experience. One can say I know the north, south, west, and east of our school district. You know me as the current Director of Assessments and Accountability, who recently provided you with the district dashboard and the online calculator for the village. I simply tell you my background because during this time, I have seen six superintendents and six interim superintendents. Numerous personal changes resulting in upheaval, indecisiveness, disruption, and lower district scores as shown in my handout. With our scores going from the lower-left to the upper-right, any data analyst would tell you that we're in an upward trajectory. Barring backing and filling, the upward momentum should benefit from inertia. The only thing that could stymie this upward momentum is fundamental change. Therefore, choosing an interim superintendent and a permanent superintendent is critical. We stand here today with an opportunity to avoid confusion and disruption. We must implement our succession protocols and show the public that we planned for our contingencies. We need to do this because we've evaluated our talent and can through due diligence identify and promote. You could say that's why we will take our time and look at numerous candidates. Some might say that's not due diligence, but procrastination is something we can ill afford. If need be, let's look at the Duval County interviews and review the talent. It was obvious that Dr. Green was the cream of that crop and the others are not our answer. It is important we start the new school year with a superintendent and this would illuminate staff concerns, confusion, disruption, and we'd hit the ground running. You've had time to evaluate our talent and in order to keep our momentum going, I request that you please be decisive. The time has come. Choosing a leader is not a popular choice. Abraham Lincoln lost 17 popular elections before he became a great president. If I remember correctly, Dr. Green lost a popular election for Superintendent Marion County. Both are fantastic leaders with a great track record. Please choose less disruption and more decisiveness and promote from within our organization. Choose a leader who's shown you the ability to work with our system, someone truly involved in our upward momentum, someone who understands K-12 education in Florida, and preferably trained by Dr. Green. That person is Cindy Saunders for me. But please choose as time has come today. Thank you.
All right, Kimberly Organic and then Anthony Lasada, you're after.
She's actually speaking for, for us.
Okay, for us.
For us, yes.
A group does get five minutes.
It is a group. We don't need five minutes, but that's okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kimberly Organic, Executive Director of Curriculum and Professional Learning. Also, a Manatee County resident and parent. I am here today to speak on the interim superintendent on behalf of Anthony Lasada, our Secondary Director of Curriculum and Professional Learning, Dr. Vicky Williams, the Elementary Director of Curriculum and Professional Learning, and Dr. Robin Thompson, who's the Director of Early Learning. Over the past five years, our district has made great gains under the leadership of Dr. Green and her team. As employees of the district as well as parents of students in Manatee schools, we are here to urge you to consider keeping consistency during this transition while we search for a new superintendent. Every superintendent has his or her own vision and we are aware that we could see some changes next year when new leadership takes place. In the meanwhile, we feel it is best for our students to only experience that disruption once when a permanent replacement is found. We are hopeful our student achievement will continue to increase as we move forward. Please support us in reaching that target by selecting an interim superintendent who will help us to stay on course with the district initiatives that we have in place to achieve our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Gretchen, I imagine you're here for the naming of the school. Pat Stream?
Superintendent.
Superintendent, come on down.
I'm sorry, for those of you interested in what I was showing, it was something that came through from S&amp;P just now. They raised a credit rating for the school district. No, I'm doing this because I can see people looking saying, "What is he whispering about?" I just received this on my-
For the record.
Text message for the record.
Take the poll for the record, though.
I know lots of people who would enjoy that. We moved, our credit rating was moved up under Dr. Green to an A. You really don't, a lot of people may not realize how big a deal that is, but it means our borrowing cost is a lot lower. It means we save money. It means the district is on track. Thank you. I just wanted to share that because it's been said before. "What are you whispering about?" Now you know.
Thank you.
Come on down.
Thank you. I just talked into this and I'm heard, right? Okay. To the Chair and to the Assistant Chair and all the distinguished Board Members, Dr. Green, Ms. Saunders, and our legal department, which title bomb. I'd like to address comments on the interim superintendent. I have been in this county for 31 years as an educator, as an assistant principal, and as a principal. Like the others have said, I've watched six or seven superintendents come and go along with interim superintendents. And the hardest thing for people, whether it's the community, whether it's the schools, whether it's the children, the teachers, or the administrators, is change. Change is very hard. It's often very good, but it's also very hard. At this time, we are two months away from starting the new school year. Perhaps a little less than that now because June's going away rapidly. We need continuity. We need solidity. We need people to feel confident that the person in the driver's seat knows and understands them. When a new superintendent comes in, that's the first thing they do is get to know the people because that's what you should do. You need to know your people. So, I ask that as you make this decision, you think about, again, promoting from within and making sure that we have that continuity and we have the trust of all our stakeholders that the school system is in good hands. And for me, that would be Ms. Cindy Saunders. Thank you.
Sandra Hawley.
I'm speaking on the naming of the new school.
Okay. And then last but not least, Mr. Canard. Dr. Canard.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Canard, a voting member of Manatee County. I'm here today to endorse for the interim superintendent of our school district, Mrs. Cindy Saunders. If we look back in time, we realize that this school district went through a lot of tumult that ended up in 2013 with Mr. Rick Mills coming on as our superintendent. He brought with him a deputy superintendent, Dr. Diana Green, who then brought onboard on her team, Mrs. Saunders. If we look back at that timing, we realize in 2013 and 14, we had 19 schools that were at the level of D and F. Today, we have no F schools and we have nine D schools. If we look at our graduation rate of our, of our district, it was in the 70s at that time and is now up to 81%. If we look at the third-grade reading program, if, if we were to take away one of the charter schools that is not performing, we basically have not gone backwards in that and the programs that are now in place from K to 2 are going to be starting to show a lot of improvement in the very near term. We're all aware of the tumult of September 2012 when this school district basically collapsed both financially and administratively. I would suggest that we are now at one of the, one of the most important times in the school district because there's been a nice turnaround that started under the guidance of Superintendent Mills and the team that Dr. Green was here with. And now we have Mrs. Saunders, who is an ideal candidate to move up to interim superintendent. She's a known individual. She has relationships not only with the community but with you as a Board and with the administrators and the teachers in this community. If we need anything now, we need the continued stabilization that has started to occur. For that reason, I'm strongly endorsing and hope that you also will follow the lead to put Mrs. Saunders in as our deputy, as our interim superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment. At this time, I have five more people for naming.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Dr. Green, we are moving to workshop item number one. Presentation of Proposed Changes to Policy 5600, Code of Conduct for the 2018-2019 school year.
Yes, we have Mr. George Schreier, who is, I don't believe you have met him. He is our new Director of Student Services. When Mr. Clark was elevated to Executive Director, Mr. Schreier has many years of experience in our school district and his sidekick, Skip Will Hoyt, has been an advocate for students for a long time and both of them are here to present the changes to our Code of Student, our Student Code of Conduct.
Mr. Schreier, Mr. and Mr. Will Hoyt, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Dr. Hope, Dr. Green, Board Members, Ms. Saunders, Mr. Serrana. Thank you for having us today. It's a pleasure to be here. Our purpose here today is to present to you what are the proposed, proposed changes in the Student Code of Conduct. There are 18 of them. They are mired in three separate reasons for the proposed change. One speaks to clear, concise, laser-focused, objective language for our students and parents. Two speaks to a consistent and married terminology between our focused student data system, our Code of Conduct. And three speaks to the importance that we feel it comes about from our students and parents. Being aware of House bills, excuse me, Senate bills, Florida statute that's recently been passed down that could affect a student's educational process. We have a PowerPoint, brief PowerPoint. We've also supplied you with a copy of the PowerPoint. I'll give a brief overview as we go through. Mr. Will Hoyt will go into deeper detail. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. With that being said, with your permission, we'd like to proceed. Thank you. Okay. Number one, I'm not, I'm not gonna read them to you. I'm just gonna, again, do a brief overview. We made a change in what we do with the paper copies of the Code of Conduct. Two reasons, basically, to be good stewards of our finances and to give, give individual schools the autonomy to do what they think is best for their students and parents. We added a section, Explain Removal for Involuntary Examinations, again, so that our parents can be informed of new statutes. Three, this speaks to clear language that I talked about, smoking simulators as opposed to electric smoking devices. Four, we wanted to combine and focus what our language is in any threat to schools so we could have a broader view and be very, very centered because that's such a serious topic.
Did you want to, explanation of any of them?
Sure, go ahead. Absolutely.
Well, just, let me just recap one through four there real quickly. In terms of a change with the Code of Conduct and the printing costs, this is a slow evolution into this point where we're at right now. Just five years ago, we printed 55,000 copies of that Code of Conduct and a lot of them wound up in File 13 at the end of the school year in school hallways, garbage cans, never even been read. So, we've been weaning schools off of it and we're hopeful that this year we can go to a completely electronic dissemination of the Code of Conduct. And as such, the language in the introduction reflects that. When we talk about the Marchman and Baker Acts, this is something that we wanted to get in front of prior to any tragedies that struck the school district or the state this year. You know, this is something that occurs on school grounds, either a Marchman or Baker Act, and that's when a student is considered a threat to themselves or a threat to others and with the Marchman Act under the influence of a substance. So, with that, we just wanted to explain to parents that yes, your child is subject to removal under these provisions. We did not get into detail under the removal of the students, but we just wanted them to know in general terms that it might happen. And as Mr. Schreier said, we're just updating the language with electronic smoking devices and with the threats, we had a lot of different sections that were threats. And again, we wanted to get in front of this early in the year and just condense all of our threat sections into one, which we have done. And you'll see more of that as we go through the presentation.
Which one is it down? There it is. Hold on just a second. Let's- Yes, sir. Since you went ahead and started elaborating before we had questions, let's go ahead and take a question from Mr. Kennedy.
Good time. Thank you, Mr. Schreier. Mr. Schreier, congrats on your, on your new position.
Thank you.
I have a couple of, just really kind of minor items. One, Skip, as long as you mentioned it about, we're trying to go paperless, but obviously there are some parents or families who may want a paper copy. I see on page one, they can opt into-
Yes.
The paper copy. What, at what point would we have to go to print? And I'm just, I'm asking that, which is leading into my next question about the superintendent's introduction.
The day after the Code of Conduct is approved in July. That's how quick we want to get on it.
Okay, okay. The reason I ask is because, you know, not to shove her out the door, but page, you know, page two is addressing our 18, 19 students, but Dr. Green will, she's the intro page, but by then she will-
We recognize the face on the page, Mr. Kennedy. Absolutely. That's been a discussion so far. We like to keep it. It looks good. But, you know, we'll acquiesce to whatever the decision is going to be.
So, you guys already talked about, okay.
Yes, there's a lot of good-looking faces we can put in there.
Okay.
His won't be one of them.
Okay, moving along.
And I, I just have one more in this section. And we kind of had the same conversation during the policy conversation, you know, like last summer about, it says on page one, complaint should be forwarded to the, to the following Equity Coordinator, Sherman Stroman, and then his address and extension. Same thing when we talked about policy.
We're gonna hold, we're gonna define the position, not the individual in the position.
In case we have turnover during the, during the school.
And we did have that discussion.
Okay, great. That's like that for now. Thanks.
Mr. Cologne.
Just a quick question. Do you plan on printing any of them?
As of this moment, no. That's not the intention that I know, but that's not my decision. So, we'll engage in conversation and if that's the decision of our chain of command, then so be it.
I would suggest that we print maybe 5% of what we printed last year. Keep them in each school, not give them out to students for parents who might come in and request them who aren't technologically savvy enough to go on and look at it.
That's one of the considerations we're making. There becomes a, you know, a point where the fewer copies you print, the higher the cost per print.
Notice I said 5%.
And we're certainly, we're gonna certainly listen to what our schools say and work with them as needed.
Well, every school is different, but, you know, I know there are some parents who are technologically challenged like I am, so.
Okay, so my, my understanding that in July, we will be finalizing our approval and then we can also address, you know, how many copies should be printed, will rely on legal counsel, et cetera.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, I think we're on number, is it six?
Five, sir.
Well, we went through five. But go ahead.
Again, this speaks to focusing our language against any type of threat, so everything is covered. If you look at six, that speaks to Florida statutes and, again, the mental health services aspect that has, is coming down the pipe for this year. Seven, again, laser focus on threats to our schools. Mr. Will Hoyt, if you want to elaborate a little?
That's the part of the, the threat section that was out there by itself and, again, it just was a separate section related to chemical and biological threats. There's no need to have these different sections that speak to different types of threats. We wanted to condense and generalize it and all the consequences and ramifications remain the same for no matter the threat. Any questions or comments on questions or topics five through seven? Wait a minute, it's the wrong direction. Eight, yes, sir.
Okay, again, move to section titled Violent Acts. That's just basically to fit in the handbook. It's basically just so everything is in even. Number nine was important to us because we really wanted to focus on what our Board policy is on students with guns in the car. Previously, it was we reserve the right. Now, it's absolutely under no circumstance. Number 10, change in verbiage from distracting to disrupting. Our thoughts were disruptive, stops school instructional environment, it stops instructional motivation as opposed to distracting. So, we wanted to be as objective as we can be with that.
Okay, I, I have a question on number nine, okay, because you're using the term student. Do we have any students that are currently sheriff's deputies or police officers? I.e., they're taking a school resource officer certification course at MTC?
Probably not would be my best guess, but that's not known to me, Dr. Hope.
Well, actually, I think, I think we may. I think we may, so.
I would think not, although I'm not sure based on the fact that to be a law officer, they would have to graduate.
If you'll check with, with MTC, because I, I do believe MTC provides a school resource officer certification program and that program is provided to existing law enforcement officers and if they're enrolled, they may be considered a student. So, just make sure that there's an exception as the law allows for police officers, et cetera.
We will follow up. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Also, Mr. Cologne. We get a lot of retired officers from other counties, districts, and states to come down here who are still technically allowed to be armed and they may qualify if they're taking our course here to be- if they're taking our course here to be certified here.
Good point, absolutely, we can follow up.
Just thought I'd mention that, since I've gone into graduations and seen a couple of older faces.
Right, we'll absolutely follow up on that.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. Gentlemen, I have a question, too. If I'm, if I'm reading the, the change right, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but under Florida statute, a student could come to school with a weapon as long as it is secured in their locked vehicle?
If it's a legally owned weapon under seven ninety point one-one-five, uh, yes. As long as that weapon's legally owned by the student, it can be legally stored, but school districts are afforded the latitude to be able to reserve their right to exempt that, so...
Which is what we're doing right now.
Yes, sir, but our, we did that last year, but our code of conduct committee felt that the language needed to be, uh, more emphatic, uh, and that's why we added strictly prohibited to the language in the code of conduct this year.
Thank you.
All right, number, is it ten?
Right, we, we changed verbiage from distracting to disruptive. We felt that disruptive was more objective, was clear to the point, and spoke to instructional momentum. Number eleven, again, a very slight change in language, um, to be more objective and more concise. Mr. Will Hoyt, do you have anything else?
Well, this, uh, was done again, consistency with state statute language and under the guidance of our esteemed general counsel, Mr. Mitch Titlebaum, uh, we, we followed his recommendations with that language, so, uh, that's a direct reflection of his involvement with the code of conduct committee. Thank you, sir.
Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are going to speak to student disclosure at registration. Self-reporting if you've been referred for mental health service. Thirteen, again, speaks to the self-reporting part of when a student registers into our district. And again, fourteen speaks to House Bill seventy twenty-six that talks about full disclosure for being referred to mental health services.
And, and we see that throughout the code of conduct changes, those references to HB seventy twenty-six and the referrals to mental health services, and this is another one of those junctures where we had to see it. Previously, when students enrolled in our district for the first time, they had to reveal whether they were under an expulsion order from other districts or whether they had been involved with DJJ contact, and those are state requirements. This was added to that, so we decided to create a new section for the different things that students are required to report upon their enrollment as a new student in our school district, and all three of those will reflect those changes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Real quick, um, on that point, uh, do we list out anywhere in the code of conduct what is the penalty if the student or family does not disclose that history when they enroll in Manatee County schools?
Um, well, it's not going to be necessarily a penalty, Mr. Kennedy, it would be depend on what they're, it would be dependent on what they're trying to hide. So, if information would come to light that they were indeed under an expulsion order, then we would go ahead and honor that expulsion order, as long as the event that triggered their expulsion would have triggered an expulsion here in Manatee County, it would be reviewed by our chain of command, and they would make the appropriate decision.
All right, got it, thank you.
Okay. Number fifteen?
Oh, down arrow, hold on there. There we go.
Okay. This one, we updated language. We, we feel it's very important that our language to our parents and students isn't antiquated, that it's modern, so that's, that's the purpose of fifteen. Sixteen, again, was moved to, to fit better, um, and provide a better visual appearance. Seventeen speaks to the Hope Scholarship, uh, that's part of Bill F. of Florida statute. And eighteen, we have added a new discipline matrix that will be consistent for every school. Each school now will operate under the same discipline matrix, will have grades six through eight under one and grades nine through twelve under two, and our hope is to be more consistent. So, for, for example, if a child moved from Buffalo Creek to SUG, they'd be under the same guidelines, and that's the purpose of that.
Okay. Mr. Titlebaum, for comments?
Just want to respond to Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy, there's a Florida statute for people that fail to disclose, and it's, it's Florida statute eight thirty-seven point zero-six, false official statements. Whoever, whoever knowingly makes a false statement in writing with the intent to mislead a public servant, which would be us, and the performance of his or her official duty shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of the second degree punishable as provided in Florida statute. So, there is a penalty to it, and it's, may not be expressly stated, but it is definitely the law on the books.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
Uh, thank you. Um, and Mitch, so, so, um, school district employees under that are, are public servants or public officials?
We are public servants.
Public servants.
We are, and it's a second degree misdemeanor.
Okay.
I'm not sure it's ever been prosecuted.
No, thanks, that answers my question.
Sure, sure.
Mr. Schreier, one more.
For another follow?
I do, it's about, it's about the service animal, um, piece, which I see that we've added, um, but when I was reading the document earlier, and I, you guys help me out, there's a, in the transportation section, it says, without exception, no animals on a school bus, and I was curious, do we intentionally not have an exception for service animals? If we have a visually impaired student down the road, or, I mean, I know we have visually impaired students now.
With service animals?
If we come, yeah, if we come across a situation where we have a visually impaired student with a dog, with a guide dog, the way that I read the code of conduct, there would be no exception for that service animal.
Well, we would not be able to not abide by the ADA guidelines that are established, so, and, and I'm quite sure, without speaking for transportation or my chain of command, it would be a case-by-case review, uh, of any situation.
Absolutely, we'd collaborate with transportation, do what's best for the student, that's, that's what, absolutely, we'd do what's best for the child.
I'll double-check that code of conduct transportation section, though, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, no, it just jumped out to me, and looking at the last two pages, there's a whole lot of collaboration that went into this document, there's about thirty names on that list of people who contributed to this.
Yes, sir. Team Ever.
Thanks to all of you guys.
Good team, too.
All right, that's it for me, Mr. Schreier. Thank you.
I see no further questions, comment, Mr. Cologne?
Quick question, usually, uh, when a child is visually impaired or something along those lines, if they have a service animal, wouldn't they get separate transportation? Don't we have special transportation for that?
Quite possible, yes, sir.
Okay, because, you know, generally when you have a lot of kids on a bus, it may say on the dog not to touch the dog because it's a service animal, but kids don't necessarily listen to that, and there could be an incident where a dog might bite a kid, and that would not be a good idea. I know it's hard for a service animal, but sometimes, you know, dogs are dogs.
Yes, sir, we take that into consideration when we communicate with transportation.
As you said, case-by-case basis.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, sir.
All right, members, we are now on item number two, the discussion around the interim superintendent. Uh, as we all are aware, uh, Dr. Green has accepted a position to be the superintendent for the Duval, uh, district schools. We are required by law to have a superintendent, uh, which means we need a, a superintendent, interim or otherwise, in place, uh, upon the date of resignation, um, by Dr. Green, which is, her last date is the thirtieth, which means midnight on the first of July, we need to be able to have a new superintendent sworn in, preferably before midnight, uh, so that, uh, the chain of command continues. With that being said, a, a couple of, a couple of, but points I want to make, uh, Mr. Minor had earlier, uh, or last week, had requested that we add an agenda item to discuss the, the sort of process of selecting a permanent superintendent. And I, we, we chose not to put it on the agenda because what is our primary concern is a superintendent to take place, uh, as interim on July first. Many of you, as well as I, have been consulting with both the Florida School Board Association, as well as the Florida Association of District School Superintendents to, to provide some guidance and insight. As you know, we are members of the Florida School Board Association, which does provide both consulting as well as search services, and, and Andrea Messina, who is the executive director, uh, that I think we've all known and worked with for some time, uh, is actually here today, uh, and so she is going to make herself available to, to help with the discussion, answer any questions, so that we both cover some of the, the, the sort of foundation, you know, as, as Mr. Minor rightly so, is beginning to think through, um, but, uh, also to, you know, provide some insight into how other districts have experienced this transition. The way I would like the conversation to go today, and, and one or more of our speakers spoke to it, as I began thinking through the position that we're in and, and, and where we have been in the past, uh, I, I believe that we need to, to focus on three critical areas. Uh, one is to, to make a decision that will result in the, in minimizing any disruption that this transition would cause. Second is to minimize any regression of progress and gains that we have made over the past few years. And, and thirdly, provide a climate of, of stability and predictability, uh, for our staff and faculty, keeping in mind that, that we now have the financial resources to be extremely competitive in hiring teachers and bus drivers and other support personnel. And so, the decision that we make, uh, needs to be one, I believe, that encompasses these, these three criteria, uh, to allow us to then move forward into a period of a process to, to number one, develop a plan, a strategic plan for the district that clearly defines where we want the district to be in five years, where we would like it to be in ten years, the path that we need to follow to get there, and then identify with the help of, of consultants, the School Board Association, and others, identify the, the type of, of, of individual that will be most successful in helping us implement that plan. Organizations, when they reach a point like this, usually have two directions to go. One is the organization makes the decision that we, we don't know, we don't have the capacity to envision where, where the organization should be in five years, and, and that becomes a different process. Then you hire a leader, a CEO, a superintendent, who's going to come in, figure it out, and tell us what we need to do. Or, where I believe this organization is, we're at a point in, in our progress that, that I believe we have the capacity, uh, through some, some work, to, to chart that, that plan, and to identify where the community, uh, and this board believes this district should be five years from now in, in academic achievement and, and physical effectiveness. And we go about developing that plan over the course of the next few months, and, and then we, uh, are able to identify the type of leadership that we need that can implement that plan. And, and that's the reason why I felt we probably didn't need a detailed or in-depth conversation around the search process for a permanent superintendent, because we have before us a, a critical need to have a superintendent in place, uh, but by July first. That being said, my hope from a sort of scheduling perspective is that if during this workshop we are able, and I want to preface this, we, I prefer to be the absolute last vote, I also would prefer to not be the deciding vote around an interim superintendent, meaning I think we all should be able to either, you know, coalesce around someone who meets the criteria that we need. If so, if we're able to accomplish that through this conversation, uh, then we will add on to the agenda the, the selection of that individual for the purposes of authorizing the, the board's general counsel and the chair to negotiate an employment agreement for a superintendent to serve during the interim. And so, that's how I would kind of like to lay the foundation, um, for the conversation. Duval County went through a very interesting exercise prior to their meeting to select Dr. Green, where each board member, having had time to review the applicants, the focus groups, the, the one-on-one meeting, the, the, those conversations, and then they each expressed kind of their thoughts about what was needed, uh, if they had a name in mind, and I would like us to, if we are able to, to end this section of the workshop with that, to go across the, the dais and, and give each one of you the opportunity to, to talk about whom you believe would best serve in this role. And, um, so with that, I'd like to go ahead and open it up for conversation. You tell me whether you would like, uh, Ms. Messina to come to the podium right away, or you want to have a conversation, and then as you have questions, um, we can, we can bring her up. They are just this close to wrapping up the superintendent search for Brevard County. I think they're going to be narrowing down the list today, or maybe they already have.
They hired someone today.
They hired someone today, so this is a success, so... So, what's, what's your pleasure? Who would like to start off the conversation or the suggestions? Mr. Kennedy?
I'll start it off, sure. I can get my turn eventually. Um, the, this has certainly been what feels like a long process, but it's really only been a few weeks, but, um, um, have had, uh, to say many discussions would be a gross understatement, but, um, for me personally, when Dr. Green first told me that this opportunity of Duval had presented itself, and I was pretty much from that moment assuming, okay, we're about to lose her, um, there were three names that really came to mind. It was Cindy, it was Doug Wagner, and it was Dr. Russo, and I'm like, oh, there you are, hi, Dr. Russo, there she is. So, it's interesting that we, my feeling is we've kind of coalesced down to what I thought were our top three. There have been, um, like I said, many conversations, formal, informal, via email, at the milk case and Publix, um, people yelling things as they drive by, you know, um, but...
Unsolicited letters.
Unsolicited letters, you name it.
Anonymous.
Various forms of communication, but, um, and there, there is diversity of opinion in there, but, um, to, to my, the feedback that I've received from the public, a, a broad consensus has formed around Cindy, really over the past kind of week or two, and what was, was strongest for me, um, was when you hear from people at the director level and the principal level and the AP level, the people who are closest with her, to say, which I have also been saying that we need stability, we need continuity heading into this next school year. So, that's me, I'm, I'm going to support Cindy for the job, and, um, that's, that's where I'm at.
Mr. Cologne? Mr. Cologne?
Like Mr. Kennedy, I have received numerous phone calls, letters, insults, uh, unsolicited threats, uh, around numerous individuals and what I should do and what I shouldn't do, and, uh, I find it very interesting. Tempers seem to run from one extreme to the other. I, like Mr. Kennedy, also, uh, looked at all three of the individuals, looked at Susan the hardest because, uh, she is head of the audit committee, and I'm kind of a finance guy, so I like somebody who knows how to count numbers. Saying all of that, uh, I will also say that one person did call me for Susan, and at least that person was kind enough to give their name and the reasons that they were supporting her, and I appreciated that, and I want them to know that, because, uh, most of the other people were not, uh, with a few exceptions. There were some people who favored Ms. Saunders, who were, you know, gave their names and, and the reasons, and sent emails and things like that, and I appreciate people who have the courage of their convictions. Doug, on the other hand, I'm afraid to lose from MTC. Doug is so great at what he does that, uh, I'm kind of like, I want to keep him there because without him, I don't know, uh, how MTC would move, because they're just, uh, they're firing on all cylinders, let me put it that way. I want to keep the momentum going that Dr. Green has put in place, and as I just remarked to you earlier, Standard and Poor is just up the school board's rating from a triple B-plus to an A-minus.
A, 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 A. A, that's higher than A-minus, A, A.
I stand corrected, uh, but that, that's a, that's a huge win for this district, going from the brink of bankruptcy to an A-rating. That, that's like moving a mountain. You know, some of you realize that I know, and there are people out there who say, oh, well, that's not a big deal. No, it's a huge deal, and I want to keep that going.
That's why the financier wanted it to be an A-minus, because his bank would make more money off of us if it were an A. more money off of us if it were an A-minus versus an A.
Now, 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 let's be nice now. I make no money off of that. I have no involvement with any of those issues.
And you don't vote on those issues.
And I never vote on them, and my bank doesn't do them anyway mostly. I think that in order to keep the momentum going, in order to deal with someone that our administrators are familiar with, they know what to expect from that person, since that person's been working with them, I'm going to go with Cindy Saunders, because I think that she has the relationships already in place, and I don't want to bring someone in at this time who's going to have to establish new relationships, be in a position where, well, should I go to this school first? Should I go to that school first? Who's running this school? Who's running that school? What are the issues that are pending in Manatee versus the issues that are pending in Lakewood Ranch or Brayden River? I want someone who already knows what these issues are, and someone who can, as was said, hit the ground running, who's already in the race, not starting from scratch, so to speak. Although all of the candidates, in my mind, are fully qualified, I'm looking at it from a perspective of, when Ms. Saunders came down here, where did she come from? She came from Marion County. Who did she come with? Dr. Green. They've been a team from the beginning, and although I'm losing the first pitcher in the team, I'd rather keep the relief pitcher than have to start from scratch. So, that's kind of like the way I feel about it, and if I have my way, it'll be Ms. Saunders, because I think she can fill the role, and everybody would be comfortable with it at this point in time. And we've, she's also hired a lot of new people, and for them to see a new face in place when they come is going to be a little disconcerting to some of them, at least in my opinion. So, I'm going with Ms. Saunders, and I'll shut up now.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen. Vice Chair Messenger?
I cannot express how much I've thought about this. I'm, as everybody knows, I'm a huge Doug Wagner fan. I think Doug Wagner is wonderful for so many reasons. I think he's incredibly thoughtful. I think he has what we would want in this position. But I met with Mrs. Saunders Sunday night. She was kind enough to meet with me and have some coffee, and I asked her a lot of questions, and she answered them very honestly and very openly, and I really appreciated that. And I think one of the things that came out of that meeting was, you know, any business needs a good succession plan, any business needs, you know, to continue to fulfill that, and I think she understands that and supports those needs. I think that this is a difficult time for us because, you know, July 1st ERP, school August, and not to mention as Dr. Shirin, maybe she left, nope, she's there, talked about the amount of turnover, and really, I'm a visual person, so I really loved the graph that she gave us, and you could really see the movement that has happened for all those years. And really, what that speaks to is what that does for staff, for the teachers, for the principals, what that does to those, because if you really look, the more movement, the lower the grade, you know, the more changeover. I don't want that, you know, I want to support our teachers, and I want to support our principals. And so, I do believe that the smoothest transition would be Mrs. Saunders, and I've expressed that to her, that I think that she's tough, and I think she's known for being tough, and I like that. I like any woman that's known for being tough. I always like that. And one of the things that I expressed to her was that, you know, and she actually expressed it to me, is that the purpose of the interim really is just to maintain the course, not to make a lot of changes, but just to keep us going until we decide what way we want to go. And I think that, I think she will do that for us. I think that she will also help support people that are under her, so that those people can continue on with their careers, and we were talking about the succession plan and helping other people, so that they get a new knowledge base. And I think that she can help with those things, because she already has a vast knowledge base. So, I definitely support her for our interim position, and I know that we'll have to talk about how long we want that to be for, and we'll have to tackle that, I'm sure, next. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I approached this with, you know, what are we really doing here? That is, I sort of envisioned that, you know, this afternoon, we might be talking about how much we've advertised the need for an interim. I don't know. You know, that we put it in newspapers and academic journals, submit a resume, your interest, your background to this district. I don't know that. Now, I don't read everything in the world, but I haven't had a report today about that and how many people have expressed interest in this, and I would have thought that would be kind of a proper protocol and procedure to go through. I've received resumes. I've received lots of letters. I've received lots of phone calls, and I don't know all the people who might be interested in this position. I've had suggestions of people who haven't contacted me, and I've asked around, but it's kind of like, here we are at the church, and who's going to, who are we going to walk down the aisle? So, I guess that's kind of a concern. I think the argument's made, well, we have a superintendent that's leaving at the end of the month, and so, we just got to do it. I don't think that's an excuse for not having given out notices and information to the community who might be interested. The people that I've heard that have expressed some interest, I think are all very, you know, qualified. And, you know, what to, I look for in an interim superintendent is pretty much what I'd look for in a permanent superintendent, because an interim is the superintendent. And those qualities that I look for in any superintendent are, you know, a good person, decency, hardworking, yes, tough, familiar, hopefully, experience in education, Florida education, experience preferably as a superintendent someplace, because it's always a little bit different when you're kind of the top person than, well, somebody else. What, I'm going to ask some questions. I was hoping that we'd hear from Andrea Messina first about her thoughts. We sort of, as far as the interim position, we sort of passed over her. Maybe she says, Dave, I would rather have a cup of coffee than talk with you, but...
Mrs. Messina.
But I would like to hear her thoughts. I would like to hear a report from the superintendent as to what extent we have, you know, advertised the opening of this interim position.
Would you like Mrs. Messina to talk about the issues you raised, or would you like to go, what questions first?
Well, how about Dr. Green? Have I missed something? Have we been advertising the need for this interim position in journals and what, to what extent have we told the community and the world we are looking for the best interim superintendent available on it for an indeterminate period of time, you know, to serve our community?
Before Dr. Green mentions, we did discuss at the meeting that we were going to need to look for an interim. Unfortunately, we had a very short period of time, and your points were very well taken.
Can I get a response from Dr. Green, please? Thank you.
So, I think we did make it publicly known, but Dr. Green?
The interim superintendent was made publicly known at your board meeting, but no, we have not advertised in magazines or any other location.
Thank you.
And just a note, and Mrs. Messina, we're bound by law to have a superintendent sworn in, we're bound by law to have a superintendent. So, even had we done a national search, it would be very difficult to have them, if we got an outside person, to have them clear, but at any rate, Mrs. Messina.
May I respond to those comments? I think I'm the only board member here who was present when the letter from Dr. McGonigal was read, saying I resign, you know, effective that Monday when the board meeting was held, and there was a scramble. And, you know, how we went about it, I wasn't on the board at that time, I was a candidate for school board at that time, I was sitting in the first or second row, and all of this kind of transpired, and I was very active in that meeting, because it looked like some very hasty decisions were being made, and there wasn't a lot of thought, there wasn't advertising, and I hate to see that repeated again. So, with that being said, I'd like to hear from Andrea Messina, her thoughts about interim choice of superintendent.
Mrs. Messina for a response, thank you.
Thank you. I will tell you that I, as you, most of you know, I've been the executive director of the School Boards Association now for almost three years, and prior to that, I worked at the School Boards Association for two years, so that's kind of five years there, and before that, I was a school board member south of here in Charlotte County for 12 years. So, I've kind of watched the Florida education and superintendent changes for about 20 years now. And typically, when there are superintendent searches, about half of them involve an interim superintendent. The others have enough of a transition that they can just do a superintendent to superintendent. But as you correctly noted, Mr. Minor, the phrase interim, while it may be used in this conversation, according to law, it is a superintendent of schools of whatever county this person is, and interim just really means the length of the contract. Typically, what happens is you have kind of two paths that are followed to select an interim superintendent, and I'll use the Duval County and Manatee County as my two examples to illustrate the two paths. One path typically would be a former superintendent and/or a retired district administrator who still lives in the county, who has retired within a short period of time, and for the reasons that many of your community members mentioned, that person is known to the district, understands how the district runs, so they bring that person back for a certain period of time. That's what they've done with Dr. Willis up in Duval. And the other is to bring in an internal, which is what happened with Dr. Green, she was your interim superintendent, and then you hired her as your permanent superintendent. Those are the typical two routes that are followed. It's rare that the interim superintendent position would actually be advertised for. Typically, what happens is what I hear has happened here, as soon as people know that an interim is going to be needed, people start getting resumes, that sort of stuff. I typically call around and find some retired superintendents. If I'm directed from a board and say, I'm going to need a interim for X time period, is that something you're interested in doing? Some of them say, yes, no, maybe so, and that's actually how you got Dr. Gaylor, which was somewhere in your path of the six superintendents that people were referring to. He was ready and available and willing to do it for that particular time period. So, there's a number of routes to get to where you are, but for the position of superintendent on an interim basis, because it's an executive-level position, and because it's kind of an open-ended thing, it's not typically something that necessarily would have been advertised for. That doesn't mean people don't apply. It doesn't mean people don't make it known that they're interested.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
Mr. Chair, I thought it occurred to me that we discussed at the last meeting, Dr. Green's recommendation that we treat this process as her interim process was treated, in that the person who is the interim cannot apply for the permanent job. If I remember correctly, Jean and I expressed support for that recommendation from the superintendent, and I think before we, and I apologize, I should have asked this at the beginning, is that the will of the board, that the interim cannot apply for the permanent job?
Let's say, because that there, that's a reasonable discussion, but why don't, I think that's a good question for Mrs. Messina.
My recommendation for school boards, which is really what you all, your membership pays me to do, is to keep school boards' options open as much as possible. That's what I recommend to boards. I know that some boards don't always take my recommendation, and that's perfectly fine, but I would never recommend that you would preclude anyone from applying at a later date, because you just don't know what's going to happen. Also, my position with regard to an interim superintendent is that it is, for whatever length of time, the most insightful and information-gathering interview you'll ever be able to conduct. And so, in many times, it makes perfect sense, as it did when you hired Dr. Green, to move that person in, and if you preclude them upfront, you could be limiting your options, which is what I try not to have boards do, is limit their options.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Minor?
Okay. Some history as I perceived it. You know, concerning Dr. Green, she, when Mr. Mills said he was going to retire, she was a deputy superintendent. And she agreed to, you know, serve as interim superintendent, and there wasn't really much discussion or debate, there wasn't any, well, if you're interim, you can't be superintendent. There wasn't anything like that. When Mr. Mills was, you know, selected, Dr. Green came in second by one vote during that selection process. Well, there are only five votes, but the, but she got two votes.
She had champions, we know that.
She had two.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, Mrs. Harvey and me. And, hey, good to see you, Barbara. She can verify the results, but, so Mr. Mills was selected, and sometime after that, he decided to retire. I think it was, I forget exactly how long, but, and we needed to have, you know, someone to, you know, service interim. Dr. Green agreed to be interim, and I think she carried that title for about a year. Dr. Green knows this probably better than I do, but it seems about that. And I think that her success in that capacity moved the board to say, you know, let's keep her, and that was 2015, 2015, a one-year, you know, contract was made, and after that, whatever you might call it, a four-year contract was made. What, and you were kind of suggesting that, you were sort of preaching against the idea that having an interim, a condition of that would, you spoke against one of the conditions is they would not, you know, be eligible to be the regular superintendent. I think, I speak in favor of that, because I think it discourages applications, you know, for the position. People who otherwise might apply would perceive that if someone is there on an interim basis and could be the superintendent, they probably got it locked up. And I'm not going to waste this postage to even send in. And I'm, I'm not gonna waste this postage to even send in, you know, a resume. And if you're trying to get the best person possible, you know, for the community, you know, closing the door, you know, by that action, I don't think serves the best community. That's how I view it, and I think that's how, well, that's how we viewed it a few years ago, and at, at least until, and maybe still so, you know, this board felt that way. And it, it figures into, you know, how we go about, you know, choosing, you know, someone to serve in this interim position. And that's my response to that, Mr. Chair. I, I don't, I, I think we should acknowledge, at least I and probably the others received, you know, comments about some verified individuals and recommendations, you know, from, from the community, all who might serve. I see, you know, a former superintendent from Glades here, and, uh...
Hendry, not Glades.
Hendry, okay. Well, I, I, you, I hope you don't mind him, Hendry's great, and I, a, a good friend of mine was born in Hendry, so, and, you know, we, we have, you know, some great retirees from Sarasota that I think might be interested if there was something more kind of formal who served as superintendent in Sarasota. We have in our audience right now, you know, someone who served as superintendent out of state, up, up in New York, you know, for about eight years. And I, I'm mentioning those qualities because I, I started a moment ago to talk in terms about qualities that we look for, and being up there at the top, and I'm not saying deputy isn't at the top, but, and deputy is great too, but being the superintendent is a little bit different than, you know, being, you know, deputy. And I, I personally would prefer superintendent experience over deputy experience. What, and I think I'm echoing, going to echo concerns that have been expressed by my esteemed colleagues about, you know, continuity, not, don't rock the boat, continue the progress. That, that's been a theme of the talks about, about what we have. And the concern is having someone even interim could stop that progress. I'm not sure it would, but I think that's, that's, that's a concern that's been expressed. And there's, I, I don't think there's anybody here who considers the, the importance of continuing this progress important more than I do. Of having the finances more than I do, who has, have a great team more than I do. I want Cynthia to stick around. I think she's done a great job. I think Doug's great job. We have other people who've great job. And in, in looking at, you know, for this interim, I'd like them all to stick around. And, and that brings me to Susan. I think this community mainly knows her as chair of our, our audit committee. As a chair of the audit committee this past year, she didn't get up and always say, "Hey, board, you're doing a terrific job." What are we doing?
I guess Ms. Messina wanted to know if you still want her to respond to something, or?
I, I just want to be respectful.
We've moved on to a different comment.
Okay, I think you, you addressed my concerns.
What, what I, if you just, a moment, along the, the, the train of thought that Mr. Minor had regarding whether you, you sort of tether or restrict the board, and that is the case in, I know, like presidential searches for universities and things like that, there, there, there is a, a, a belief that you may inhibit some candidates, but your experience in superintendent searches in Florida over the past few years, have, have you seen a decrease in quality applicants if there is a policy that the interim either can apply or cannot apply?
The first question that applicants typically will ask is, is there a strong internal candidate? And that's whether it's an interim or not an interim, they want to know if there's a strong internal candidate. And quite frankly, what we experience is that if a board, whether there's a strong internal candidate or not, truly seeks the best person for the job and makes it clear and is committed to finding the best person for the job, which may or may not be the strong internal candidate, that message is sent to potential candidates through the comments that board members make in the media.
Right.
So if a board member says, "I'm committed to our current so-and-so, so-and-so, candidates here, they're not open, I don't need to waste my time." But if potential applicants here, "Yeah, we do have some strong internal, and I'd like to see the competition because I'm looking for the best person and that's what I'm interested in," then the candidates here, "I'm interested in, in looking for the best person." So it, it really will come down to what is said at the dais that will either encourage or discourage applicants.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Wait a second, uh, Vice Chair Messenger.
Sorry, go before she sits down, because it looks like she's trying to flee.
I'm happy to get up and down, I just, he was talking on a different subject.
She's with us for the night, I assure you. She's with us for the night.
In your experience, since you talk about how much experience you have, which typically is more successful for a district, an internal candidate or an external candidate?
For the final superintendent or an interim?
During that interim period, which is typically more successful for a district?
I'm not sure we actually measure success because some interims are short-term, and it's hard to determine how much influence or how many things they were able to have an impact on, so I, I honestly couldn't answer that question. And it's not because I'm trying to beg away from it, but it is because interims serve anywhere from...
It can be at any time, I get it.
Exactly.
And it probably depends on the state of the district at the time that the opening occurs.
And the cooperation by the board, and there's any number of factors that will, my, my thing is you gotta set anybody up for success, that's number one.
That's a good point.
You make a comment about the state, and, and I want to just speak specifically once again to this graph because I really love this graph, Dr. Wilson. And if you really look at the amount of turnover there's been, and this is not just superintendents, but staff, then bringing in somebody else external would be, I truly believe detrimental at this point, just because we, we, we really are facing that possibly in the future. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm here if you need me.
Thanks. And Mr. Minor, back to your second.
Okay, well, I, thank you, Mr. Chair. With respect to interim and to superintendents, we've had the experience, the great experience of Dr. Green going from interim to superintendent. I don't think there's a lot of argument about that. I think there might be some argument about when, you know, Dr. McGonigal went from interim to superintendent. So it's, you never can tell. And there wasn't much of a search when he went to superintendent. And so that, that, that's a cautionary tale for me about having a requirement that whoever you have as interim does not, is not eligible to be superintendent. I think it precludes it. That's my personal experience here. The, the chair made some comments earlier about how this relates to choosing the superintendent, you know, for a longer term. I personally feel that it's important for us to, in an early date, basically as soon as possible, cast the net and see what fish are out there. There's a lot of good fish, I will tell you that. And when I say fish, I'm talking about possible great candidates, you know, for superintendent who would love to live in Manatee County and have highly commended experience in districts here in Florida that are as large or larger than we have here in Manatee County, who I think would feel very honored to be interviewed and, and hired to come here in a very early date. And there is competition out there, I guess, I don't know the results in Brevard, I put a call into Andy Ziegler earlier today, and I didn't get a call back, but he...
They have 12 applicants.
Yeah, Andy's on the school board in, in Brevard and succeeded me as chair of the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition. But I, I really, you know, with, you know, transition and change, I would like to minimize the amount of change that goes through this process. And having whoever we have as, as interim, I, I think that should be a short period of time, and we should start working on trying to get a superintendent as soon as possible. And Brevard, you know, did that, they did it in a very short period of time, and I, I think we've competed with them, and when Mr., are you all through?
Pardon me?
You all through? Okay.
The better question is, how close are you?
I'm sorry. But I, I'm making a pitch, you know, before, you know, our community that we get going to select a new superintendent, I don't think it serves the community, you know, to use, you know, politics as an excuse for not serving the people by getting a new superintendent, superintendent and not wait until maybe after November to go about, you know, selecting a superintendent. There's a good people out there, I think we might lose them. That being said, getting back to interim, and I was starting to talk about the candidates, including Susan Agruso, and serving as our chair of an audit committee, and I was said, saying that I think she has very high credibility in the community of working with people successfully on the audit committee, working with the ERP program, you know, to, you know, push it along for success, to be very familiar with not just, you know, the finances and, and working with our internal auditor, but she's had the experience in school district, two school districts up in New York, of being the one who rides the bull. And none of the other candidates have that. Experience of chairing by, as a volunteer audit committee, of serving as a superintendent, being someone who has credibility in this community for calling it the way it is, sometimes critical, and I, I kind of wince sometimes when she said some things, but I think she was right. And she's also praised us, you know, when we deserved it. And it's that kind of credibility that I think's important in the position of, of superintendent. I haven't heard one negative thing about Susan, Dr. Susan Agruso. And, and I, I think that, you know, her willingness, you know, to take this on, on a short period of time is great. Advantages include she'd be probably quite happy to go back, you know, just being on the audit committee. Two, her being that, you know, the, the interim superintendent means that hopefully Cynthia could continue as deputy superintendent. We have that continuity that everybody says so is very important. Doug Wagner can continue down at Manatee Technical College. I think it's a blessing. So that's, that's where I'm coming from, Mr. Chair, and I think that, you know, she's a candidate for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, members, based on what I've been hearing, it, it, it appears to me that we may be ready to go ahead and at the conclusion of the workshop, add the selection of an interim onto the agenda. I did want to make a point because Vice Chair Messenger made a good point with regards to term of this agreement, and, and, and Mr. Minor is correct, in statutes as a superintendent, the, the state law does not define an interim superintendent. So it, it is a superintendent for a period of time. Upon discussions with, with Mr. Dyer, General Counsel, he had a pretty good suggestion, and that is that the term be event-based, i.e. when we're ready to select a permanent superintendent. And so that's something that we can, can incorporate in there, as Mr. Minor said, if it ends up being the board's desire to immediately put out a search, then we would not be bound by any restricted time of the interim agreement. It would be event-based at the pleasure of, of the board, i.e. an event where we select a permanent superintendent. And so that, that would address the, the, the sort of openness, because let's, let's, let's be very frank, we've had a very short period of time in order to make a decision so that we're in compliance with state law. I think Mrs. Messina's points about trying to not restrict the board, and that would include putting a, a, a finite time on an agreement. So I think that, given the opportunity, Mr. Dye, I think, would be, I have all the confidence in the world in his ability to construct an agreement that provides for the most flexibility for the board as we begin going through the process of discussing, you know, the, the pathway that we want to go on, go down. And so with that, unless there are any other comments around the interim superintendent issue, we'll be ready to move on. And, and I will tell you all of the names that have been mentioned, you know, I've had discussions with them, I know many of you probably have had discussions with them. Dr. Agruso, who has served this district, you know, in, in incredible ways and gone beyond, has, has made it clear to me that she is willing to, to, to help this district in, in any way she can and in any capacity. The other individuals whose names have arisen, former superintendents, former act, you know, interim superintendents here, successful superintendents around the state, have all reached out to say, "We want you to be successful, you're on a great track, anything that we can do as individuals or as groups and associations, we're here to help." And so there are a, a number of, of extremely successful former superintendents and school CFOs that are, that are ready and willing to, to help this board and this district to continue a pathway to, to excellence. So unless there's any other discussion around the issue, I believe we're probably ready to add it to the agenda tonight. So with that, I really appreciate all of you that are here to speak on the naming of the, the new elementary school in Parrish. So I will turn over the gavel to Vice Chair Messenger for public comment related to the review of the name nominations for the new elementary school, which is well under construction.
I don't think I need to read the whole speech again, so we'll start with Jacqueline Lewis, and after Jacqueline Lewis will be Patricia Grimsley.
Dr. Greens, superintendent, chair, co-chairing school board members. My name is Jacqueline Lewis, and I'm here to speak on the naming of the new school. Barbara A. Harvey has been an ambassador for the Boys and Girls of Manatee County School since for over 45 years. She started as a classroom teacher, an assistant principal, district personnel, and a school board member. Our boys and girls have always been her concern and her fight. She has been a beacon of light in our Christian community and to our children. As a resident of Copperstone, I take pride in having a school in my neighborhood named Barbara A. Harvey, after someone who has amplified fine and high moral standards, someone who is a true educator. Someone who is a true educator and has dedicated her life to the Boys and Girls of Manatee County. Even after retiring, she and a group of retired educators established the ECCI, an academy which helped boys and girls with their academic, social, and moral characters. Show me a person in Manatee County who has done more and is continuing to assist the children of this county. I could go on and on and on, and you know I could. But you know the contributions that Barbara A. Harvey has made to this county. To this Board, I, Jacqueline Lewis, a resident of Cooper, Copperstone, and Parish, Florida. The school that is outside my gate, where I can just reach out and touch. I would love to see that school named Barbara A. Harvey Elementary. I thank you for your consideration, and I would love to see that in bright lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Grimsley, and then Lucille Mobley will be next.
That's hard to follow.
I know. That's my cousin. So it's okay. Good afternoon to the Chair, to the Vice Chair, to the members of the Board, and to the Superintendent. Good afternoon. I am Dr. Patricia Grimsley, a Parish resident and a Copperstone resident. I am speaking in support of naming the new elementary school in Parish, Barbara Harvey Elementary School. Mrs. Harvey has served the children of Manatee County as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, district administrator, and finally, a member of the Manatee County School Board. Her career has spanned over sixty years in total. She has proven her love for children and this entire community. When most retirees look forward to resting, her selflessness led her to continue helping children by forming Educational Consultants Consortium, Inc. The mission of this organization in part is to facilitate communication and coordinate services between the home, school, and community. These services are presented on behalf of the child in a non-threatening manner. She continues to bring hope and a future to many children through this organization. This community cannot find a more deserving serving leader than Barbara Harvey. To honor in this manner, naming an elementary school after her would be most fitting.
Thank you.
Lucille, and after Lucille will be Gretchen.
Good afternoon. To the School Board Members, Superintendent Green, it is a distinct pleasure to stand before you on this day and address and support the naming of the new school in Parish. It is my desire to see this school be named Barbara A. Harvey. What's in a name? In this case, an opportunity to recognize and cement the legacy and contributions of one of Manatee County's most prolific citizens and educators. Barbara A. Harvey's educational career spans five decades, whereby she provided services to students, parents, staff, and the community at large. First and foremost, as a teacher, I can hear Barbara A. Harvey's voice saying, I was born a teacher. As an assistant principal, principal, director of elementary education, and finally, with the support of her community, she sat for a decade and a half where you are sitting today. What's in a name? She did all of the aforementioned while raising two biological children, but that wasn't all. She opened her home and reared multiple other children. She did all of this while serving across the various community organizations. Her church, civic organization, and as a fifty-year member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, whose motto is "Service to All Mankind." Ms. Harvey has received countless awards for her dedication and interventions relating to children's issues. Yet, there is room for one more, room for one more. Put your mind's eye on activated. Travel with me. Let's make this vision a reality. Let's look at the brick and mortar. Almost completed. Construction is going to be completed shortly. Then, there will be a ribbon cutting. Hopefully, it will be pink and green for her. And yes, the name etched in bold lettering, the Barbara A. Harvey Elementary School. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Gretchen, and then lastly will be Sandra Holly.
Are those Barbara Harvey branded glasses? They're pink and green.
And I thought they were AK glasses.
Hello. My name is Gretchen Fowler. I am currently the Parish Civic Association President and also a resident of Parish, and also I live in Copperstone, which where the school is being built just outside our gates. I'm here for three reasons. One is obviously the name of the school. I am accompanied by our resident Parish historian, Norma Kennedy. She is also the Vice President of the Parish Civic Association. And I have been asked by the residents of Parish to come and speak on the naming of the school. One of the things that I would like you to recall is I invited the School Board out in 2013 to Parish, as a panel. Dr. Green was there, under Rick Wells at that time. And when you came out there, you were late getting there because we went right past it, because they didn't know where we were. So they ended up in Hillsborough County, turned around, came back. So to just, where we met was the Parish Schoolhouse. That was established back in the eighteen hundreds. So I'm here to support naming the school after Parish. Don't let us lose our identity. Don't let us lose our history. We don't have Parish anymore. It's fading away. It's becoming North River, which is fine. We want to encompass everybody, but we also don't want to lose our name. Crawford Parish founded Parish. It was named after him. He was the one who bought the land and changed it from Oak Hill. It used to be called Oak Hill out in Parish. One of the things that, we also had his son Crawford P. Parish was a member of the Florida House of Representatives. He donated the land for the current Parish school that is now our community center and one of our only historic buildings left in Parish. His other son, his son John Parish, also served on the School Board here in Manatee County. And his wife Louise Parish, was it Chiron? Styron, was the oldest Manatee County native and taught second and third grades at that very elementary school. Yes, Lamar. So what we are trying to do now is just, I was asked by the citizens in Parish to come and talk to you and represent them as a group. We also are going to respectfully, one last chance, and I promised them I would bring it to you, to change from North River High School to Parish Senior High School. And I have currently, as of today, nine hundred and ninety signatures of Parish people saying, please reconsider and making it Parish Senior High School, and don't let us lose our identity.
Thank you. Do we have other speakers?
Yep, one more. Sandra Holly.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hopes, Dr. Green, Board Members, and Staff. My name is Sandra Holly, and I'm here to represent Dr. Holly and the two hundred and forty members of Pathways Christian Fellowship, where Barbara Harvey is a member. We strongly support the naming of the new elementary school in Parish in honor of Mrs. Barbara Harvey. Mrs. Harvey has served this educational community for fifty years. She has made supreme sacrifices of both personal and professional for children and families of Manatee County. She continues to actively, positively support families in the community through the Educational Consortium and other community organizations. Caring for the educational, social, and economic needs of the children is in her DNA. As she often says, she was born a third-grade teacher. She works tirelessly for all children of this community. The naming of this elementary school in Parish will be a profound testament to the contributions Mrs. Harvey has made to the Manatee County community. We strongly encourage your consideration for naming the school in her honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any other speakers?
That is it.
All right, members. Who would like to begin? Mr. Barber.
This is the third school, and let me just pull up our PowerPoint real quick so I can just update you on the process that we went through to get here today.
And while you're doing that, Mr. Titlebaum, didn't the Board of Education, through their action and our negotiations, don't we have an approved Parish charter school? What's the name of that school?
Well, presently, we have, we're finalizing a contract for Parish Charter Academy.
Parish Charter Academy.
Which is going to be in the Parish area.
Right.
So to have another-
And that's slated for potential opening in August of twenty nineteen.
It's going to be the exact same time.
So it's Parish Charter Academy, and that's K through-
You could have two Parish schools with the same exact name at the same exact time, which could lead to confusion.
Okay, I just wanted to let everybody know that the name has sort of been taken through action of the Board of Education.
There's been an approved-
Did I frame that correctly?
Oh, beyond correctly. The Board of Education has approved the application. We, as a Board, has approved their application as well. So they are slated open. As a matter of fact, on the twenty-sixth, you'll see their contract, which will be approved. And they arguably located in Parish.
And named Parish Charter Academy.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hopes.
Mr. Barber.
And then we'll be funded by the School Board.
Well, no.
I would say they'll be funded by the FTE on the student enrollment.
Right, right, right. It's a public school.
Oh, absolutely. Charter schools are public schools.
It's one of our public schools, Parish Charter Academy.
Yes, Mr. Cologne.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Board Members. We are here to name the new elementary school in North Manatee County. The process, hang on one just a second. The process or the policy that we went through is right here. I think some of the key language here is down at the bottom paragraph. Any employee honored by the name of a new school must be employed by the district for a period of time no less, must no longer be employed by the district for a period of time no less than five years prior to the Board's selection. And also, if the School Board decides to name a school or a portion of a school after somebody who has no longer been employed by the district for less than five years, then it must be a supermajority, which is four votes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes, just please-
For a comment.
Yes, please note, Ms. Harvey is not an employee of the district. She's a School Board Member, former School Board Member. That policy was written for employees.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so-
So noted.
Okay. And then this is the process we went through to get here today is, we started the advertising of the name on April twelfth. We began accepting nominations on April nineteenth. And that name nomination process went through May thirty-first. We received two hundred and forty total name nominations, representing fifty different name variations. So we're here to ask you to select your top three. And then if you would present them to us, we'll give you some time to do that. There are a number of different name variations. For example, Ms. Harvey or for Parish Elementary. So any name you give us, considering a name that's been submitted more than once, we will count that together, and then we will tally up your votes in giving three points to your first choice, two points to your second choice, and one point to your third choice.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, for a question?
Mike, before you go, let me just be clear what you just said. There, in the list of nominated names, there's multiple variations on Barbara Harvey Elementary. There's multiple combinations of some form of Parish Elementary.
Right. So any name you put forward as your first choice, second choice, third choice, that has Barbara Harvey in it, we'll put that under Barbara Harvey. We thought that when you get to the point that you're ready to select a name at the School Board meeting, that at that point, you could decide what exactly the name would be. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And then for the benefit of the Copperstone residents that are here, the town hall meeting that we had was the one where we recognized that the entrance to the elementary school was by their electric gates? Okay, same town hall meeting, right? Okay. All right, members. Mr. Kennedy.
I get to go first again? Well, this is an easy one, because I said this two months ago, that when this moment came, I would be supporting naming this for Barbara Harvey, and I still stand by that now. And then my second choice is Parish, and my third choice is Bob Bart's Elementary, because he also had many contributions to our local school system in his many years of service at the district. And then finally, my fourth selection is Charlie Kennedy Elementary. But that is worth zero points on our scale. But I'd like to thank whoever the Joker was that put my name into the box. Thank you for the laugh.
And I probably aired, I should have deferred first to our Vice Chair, a Parish resident, and like, born in, to Parish, I believe. No comments?
Oh, I can start. You want me to talk? Is that what you're saying? My turn? I don't want to interrupt Charlie when he was really trying, what you heard was him campaigning for Charlie Elementary. And so I didn't really want to block that up for him, because, you know, he's, it hasn't been five years yet, you know? But, you know, maybe you could get a supermajority. I don't know. Well, I was born in Northwest Bradenton, but I am a Parish villager now. I'll say we're villagers. But I appreciate Gretchen being here tonight. I think Barbara Harvey is magnetic. I can't think of a better word. Anytime I've ever seen her, there's a glow. If you watch a video of her, it's, you get a tingly feeling. I get it right now while I'm talking about her. So there's something so special about her. But I am a Parish resident, and I know how a large amount of the Parish community feels, and they would like it to be called Parish Elementary. So my first vote is for Parish Elementary. My second choice would be Barbara A. Harvey Elementary. It sounds like it doesn't matter if I say the A or not. Well, that's all getting lumped in. And so then my third choice would be, just because I think of the Braden River area and all of those schools are named similarly, so I would go with North River, because once again, that's a regional location, and it would go with the high school. So those are my choices.
Mr. Cologne.
Oh, I'm next? Okay, I appreciate the Parish area, and I'm glad we have a school there that's going to be named Parish. But I have said before, when we nominated Dr. Mona Jane to be, to have the first school named after her, that the next school, in my opinion, would have to be named after Barbara Harvey. Whom to give fair disclosure, I sat as Chair of the United Negro College Fund for over a decade, and Barbara was on it even before I was, and served for decades diligently to get scholarships for minority youth throughout Manatee and Sarasota. She never restricted herself regionally. She was about helping all children, and to me, that's key. I think that that's who we need to name the school after. Someone who's got a track record as long as hers, who is a strong advocate for children of all types. And she's always helped all children, regardless of color, regardless- And she's always helped all children, regardless of color, regardless of creed, regardless of anything. Children are what she's about. I s, I always wondered why she bought that big truck, and when I saw all the kids piling out of it at our last event, I said, oh, that explains why she's driving a Navigator. It has more room than anything else, for kids. So, and of course, I see a lot of her, AKA Sorority Sisters here, hence the pink and green. As a proud Sigma, I understand completely. Uh, so Barbara Harvey is my first choice. Bob Bart's was my second choice from, because he did so much good for Manatee in moving businesses forward here in Manatee, and helping us get on a better footing after the recession, uh, for many years. My third choice was a selfish one. Charlie Kennedy Elementary School. Just fair disclosure, my grandmother was a Kennedy from Brockton, Massachusetts, so, you know, I had to go along with Charlie Kennedy Elementary.
Mr. Minor?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, um, Barbie really sucking this up, aren't you? You should, okay. Uh, number one, Barbara A. Harvey Elementary School. Number two, Babbs Harvey Elementary School. I like that one even better, you know, okay. Uh, three, Parrish Elementary School. And I do have a question about, uh, you know, we, our, our friends from Parrish. Is it even legally possible to change North River name to Parrish High School? I'm throwing that out to our, our legal team. Can we change it anytime we want?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't know of any restriction.
Right.
We could even name it Babbs Harvey High School, I guess, but, uh.
She seemed excited about that.
Yeah. You want to trade for, trade up to a high school? Well, I, you know, I've heard so much, and I, I'm sure my, my fellow board members have heard, uh, you know, this identity argument. Uh, geez, uh, it's an important part of our, our, our county and area. I mean, we got, like, Braden River, we got Lakewood Ranch, we got, you know, uh, and, uh, I think the, there's a good argument, you know, for making it Parrish High School. I remember when we were going through this process, I think that very correctly, uh, Mr. Kennedy says, you know, then, we already have a Cometto High School, and, you know, a P, I, I already have a PHS. Maybe I'm wrong. I, I thought it was, Mr. Kennedy, is that? And, um, uh, so we don't want to have two of those, and I, I guess not, but it's, we've committed greater sins. Um, and I, I would support that. I would support renaming it, you know, Parrish, you know, High School. Give it some identity. So you got one vote, and, uh, I'll make that part of my vote tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I was going to ask if it was possible, um, given the fact that I, I think Ms. Harvey lives in Copperstone and Parrish, if it'd be Barbara A. Harvey Parrish Elementary School. Um, but that's kind of long. That's kind of long. Um, so, uh, that was kind of where I was going to throw something out. Uh, to Mr. Minor's point, I will tell you, I believe that the naming of the North River High School was named through a primary motion, and primary motions may be rescinded, uh, by a majority vote of the board. So that's just, if somebody really wanted to change the name of North River High School to Parrish slash North River High School, you could do that through a, a motion to rescind the primary motion, which was the naming of North River. Um, with that being said, Mr. Barber, uh, we are supposed to turn in our ballots. Is there any other further discussion?
Well, um.
Procedurally, I'm asking for guidance.
Well, uh, you can either, uh, tell us, we're, we're tabulating.
They're public records.
Uh, or, you know, if you want to submit it, uh.
The, the, the sense of the discussion gave me the impression that it was, uh, that all members, I think, had listed Barbara A. Harvey, oh, no, 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 no.
These are public records.
Four. Right. It is, it, it would be public record, you know, as soon as it is available, so.
So, members, why don't we, um, why don't we just do a quick roll call on a vote?
We, no, we gotta have it in a meeting.
Those, it was four listed Barbara A. Harvey as number one, correct?
Well, what we've done in the past is we've tallied up the vote according to, uh, the place of the ballots. If you want to give us your votes, then we can finalize, uh.
Barbara A. Harvey, Copperstone Elementary, and Parrish Elementary.
Okay. And we're tabulating them up right now.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chair, my understanding is, tonight at a meeting, we, we choose among the top three.
Well, I think they wanted to tally, I just wanted to know if they wanted to tally, tally it from this, or just based on our comments, so we'll put these up there.
And the, and the, these are, these are public records.
Can you repeat it for me again, Dr. Hope?
Barbara A. Harvey Elementary, Copperstone Elementary, and Parrish Elementary. And then I guess, members, if we'll put our ballots up here, they can also pick up the ballots for the record.
Okay, uh, so the vote will actually be at the next school board meeting on, uh, the twenty-sixth.
After we have a public, the.
Right.
Right, the public here.
Um, the tally of the votes right now is fifteen votes, or fifteen for, uh, Barbara, some version of Barbara Harvey Elementary School, seven votes for Parrish Elementary School, three votes for Bob Bart's Elementary School, and then, uh, one vote, uh, well, two votes for Copperstone Elementary School, one each for North River and Charlie Kennedy.
All right.
We want. But thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um, for time planning purposes, uh, Mr. Harris and Mr. Toronto, what, what are we looking at for the transportation presentation or update?
Fifteen minutes. Fifteen minutes if there's no questions.
Okay, so let's, let's shoot for, let's try for ten minutes.
You scared everybody away.
I know, I have that effect. Um, we wanted to provide the board an overview of what's going on in transportation, some of the challenges we've faced, and how we are addressing those challenges moving, moving So our mission has always been to, uh, become the nation's leader in developing, uh, successful students. Bus drivers and bus attendants are the first, and most times the last people who see our students, um, in the mornings. And we try to stress the importance of their role in developing, uh, the students. Just some quick transportation facts. Uh, we transport safely over sixteen thousand students a day. We travel over four million miles annually, and we have two hundred and sixteen buses in our fleet. Now, the average age of those buses, or those buses right now are eight years old. Uh, the Florida average is also at eight years. The life expectancy of a bus is twelve years old, and we usually, uh, based on data, see a spike in repairs at the seven-year mark. We have three hundred and twenty employees in transportation. A bulk of the employees are bus operators and attendants, and a bulk of our vehi, vehicle maintenance staff are made up of technicians. How many?
Mr. Cologne?
Eighteen. What we've done is, uh, we've looked at data as our primary decision-making tool. Uh, we've looked at three years' worth of data. Right now, we have, uh, two hundred and sixteen buses in our fleet, which has remained constant. We've seen a spike in road calls at approximately a hundred and twenty-four percent. Uh, the number of.
Mr. Minor?
What, what is a road call?
Road call is when a.
Road call, okay.
A road call is when a bus breaks down, and the vehicle maintenance, uh, department has to respond to, uh, repair that bus.
Okay.
Outside the facility. Okay? The average response time for those road calls are twenty-eight minutes. Uh, some of, we've looked at some of the other districts, and those are in upwards of an hour to forty-five minutes, so it's much longer. So our guys do a great job. Uh, repair work orders, we've seen a spike of fourteen percent over the last three years, and the cost of repairs has also spiked over the last three years. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, do, do you have a breakdown by model?
We can provide that for the board.
Okay. Yeah, I think you have three different, or four different manufacturers, don't you?
We have three. Uh, Bluebird, Thomas, and International.
Okay.
We can provide you a breakdown.
Which are the oldest ones?
Uh, Bluebirds are, are oldest, um, and then it would be the International, and we've recently, um, purchased Thomas.
So, so just a suggestion there, when you, when you do that breakdown, you might get with, I think, Mrs. Saunders or someone in, kind of like the analytics department?
Okay.
And adjust the data for the age of the vehicle?
Okay.
So that we're comparing apples to apples across Man, uh, 'cause I think you wanted to know by manufacturer, Mr. Minor?
Yeah, I, I, basically, that was, you know, what data do we have to support that the buses we get from, you know, Thomas, you know, are lasting longer than those from International or Bluebird?
The, the only problem with that would be that as, um, the older buses don't contain the technology that some of the newer buses.
That, that can be adjusted in the data. That, they can do that.
And so that's where we would do the.
Yeah, if you'll get with the analytics people, if you can provide them with the raw data, I think the lan, analytics people can adjust the data for us.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, we looked at fuel. Over the last three years, we see that the, uh, diesel fuel, uh, used by school buses has gone down. Uh, the average price has gone down, but we're starting to see then uptick, um, for fuel costs. The average, uh, miles per gallon a school bus gets is around six miles per gallon.
Too bad.
Gasoline, uh, usage is also down, as well as the average price. We've seen a, over the last three years, it has gone down, and it's now beginning to rise. We've seen.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cologne?
Mr. Chairman, are they all diesel? All buses are diesel?
Yes.
Do we have any environmentally friendly buses?
We have one, but it, uh, we've, we've had problems with that bus.
Is it gas or electric or what?
It, it's a hybrid. It's a hybrid of electric and.
Hybrid electric, a diesel hybrid?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We're, we're pushing on data here, but I, I'm just curious, um, the difference between the dependability of pushers versus pullers and, uh, on your buses. Do you have any breakdown on that?
Uh, we can, we can provide that, yes. I don't, I don't have that information with me right now, but we can definitely provide it.
Are, are they still making pushers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, they're, we try to steer away from those. Uh, the reason why is because the, um, the engine compartment is really tough to work on, uh, as, as opposed to your more conventional school bus. Um, under the hood, there's more room for our techs to, um, repair school buses.
Be, because the pushers have the, you know, the back door in the middle of the bus, you know?
Right, their rear engine.
Yeah. Um, I'm wondering, how, how does that evaluate safety-wise?
Uh, they all, all school buses have to go through a, um, Florida inspection.
Okay, I was just, uh.
So they're, they're not, they have to meet the Florida specs in order for us to purchase or deem safe for us to transport the school.
It would seem safer, because it's in the, the, the escape doors are in the middle of the bus, as opposed to the back of the bus.
Well, not necessarily. Um, a lot of your, there are some engine fluid piping that goes under the bus, which could jar loose and cause an issue.
Okay.
So, we have, we have, uh, the buses are built to remedy that, however, um, again, i- it's hard to say if that's a better school bus, because it has a rear engine as opposed to conventional.
Okay, it sounds like there isn't much data locally or nationally on that. I, I, you know, if I were making pushers and had them mid-door, I'd say, hey, listen, you know, this is a lot safer, 'cause kids, you know, have, you know, closer access to get out in case of, I don't know, a fire, or rear-end accident, or anything like that.
Right. We can do some research and provide that for you. Okay. We looked at the, uh, we provided data for over three years of, um, for the number of ridership, um, that we've provided, uh, that's up three percent. Uh, total number of routes is reducing. Uh, the average on-time performance, uh, last year it was seventy-five percent. We are projecting that this year it'd be around the same. Uh, the number of miles traveled, um, has gone down sixteen percent, and the daily miles traveled has gone down as well. So we looked at this year, as far as, uh, the hundred and eighty days of providing transportation. Uh, we have, um, active bus operators, a hundred and forty-nine, uh, active attendance, one twenty-nine. On a daily average, we have eight open routes, meaning that we have to start the day with trying to cover eight routes. Now, including open routes, uh, call-offs, we see an average of five per day. We see ten scheduled off per day. We see five worker-comp issues, um, per day. Totalling, a daily average of absenteeism is four twenty-six. So every day, we start the day with trying to cover twenty-six routes. We receive approximately ninety-one phone calls on average per day. We've operated last year seven hundred and sixteen field trips, and we have thirty-four individuals who obtained perfect attendance this year.
What do you do for these, uh, that twenty-six? What, what?
That's not even ten percent.
Um, what do we do as far as?
Thirty-four, or the, the absenteeism, or the perfect attendance?
Absenteeism?
Well, I think you listed twenty-six that aren't covered.
Right.
And so it's a double, are, half of these are double routes, or this is office staff, or, uh?
Right. We, we tend to bundle up routes, uh, to help cover those, um, those individuals that have a missing driver for that route.
Doesn't sound like we have many backup drivers.
No. No, it's a, it's a national problem, and.
So, in light of that, not to throw a very big question to you, um, you know, given the, the increased pay through the referendum, I mean, what is the plan to, to change these numbers?
Well, the referendum is definitely going to help. It's going to make us more competitive, especially with surrounding districts. Um, we've, we've reached out to other entities, and, uh, one of the drivers for Federal Express has, um, told me that they also are having a problem, and they pay far higher than we do. It's, I think it's just the, uh, the nature of driving that, um, sometimes doesn't appeal.
So what, what are we going to do differently?
Well, we're.
This year?
Well, this year, we're, we're definitely going to continue the job fairs. Um, we're going to, I, I really think, once we start marketing how much and how competitive we are, that we'll see an uptick.
And I, I thought we had a discussion at one point where, in the past, we had a, a supplement or a bonus for attendance?
Yes, and those, uh, th, those are negotiated through the union, and yes, uh, we have incentive bonuses for attendance, um, and we also have referral bonuses.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me?
And, yes, Mr. Cologne?
What's the average bus driver make?
Uh, the starting bus pay was twelve dollars and fifty-eight cents, and now it is up to thirteen dollars and ninety-three cents.
So now we're almost competitive with Walmart? Is that what you're telling me?
Um, yes.
Walmart's at fourteen, I believe?
I don't know what it is locally.
I, I don't, I, I don't know exactly the starting pay for Walmart.
It's about fourteen.
Okay.
So let me see. You're gonna drive a school bus full of kids, taking their lives in your hands, and we're gonna pay you less than fourteen dollars an hour? Is there something wrong with that picture, or am I the only one who thinks that that's a little, uh?
We, we, we agree with you a hundred percent.
And that, Mr.
They're in charge of a hundred and twenty thousand dollar piece of equipment. They have three classrooms of kids. They're navigating crazy traffic, inclement weather, and trying to still manage. navigating crazy traffic, inclement weather, and trying to still manage safety on a bus and...
And a schedule.
And a schedule.
Yeah. All right. Then, I'm not blaming you. I'm just trying to get this out there.
No, no, it's, it's a extremely tough job.
I want people to understand the dilemma that you're dealing with and the level of this dilemma.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to remind Mr. Clon that I think we're all on the same page with what you're talking about, and we as a board can remedy to that situation when we enter into contract negotiations.
Yeah. I, I think, I, I think what's important is, we would really like the best laid-out plan possible, so that going into this school year, we do not have a recurrent issue with students not getting picked up or not getting picked up on time, not being delivered to school on time, not being delivered back home on time. So we, we really need a well-thought-out plan, and the clock is ticking, so that we, the board, deliver on our commitment to the voters, that these problems that we've been experiencing because of a lack of competitiveness is going to be cured.
Right.
Which means we need a plan, a solid plan, that, that, that is not restricted by what you think we may be able to negotiate, but what you believe that's evidence-based it will take to pick students up on time in the morning, deliver them to school on time safely, and then pick them up at school at the end of the day and deliver them to their home bus stop on time.
And we have some of that laid out in the presentation. Out of, we're looking at a three-year trend of, or four-year trend of bus operator, active bus operators, and the numbers, we started at 171, and it, it's down to this year to 149. Attendance, we, we're seeing a uptick for attendance, but we're trying to do, traditionally, an attendant is placed on every special needs bus. What we're trying to do is to help the drivers of regular ed buses to also put attendance on those buses as well, to help with the student management portion. And we're looking at daily average, average absenteeism. Seventeen was last year. We're up to 26 this year. We have five, pretty much five to seven on the workers' comp, and then total field trips have gone down. The reason why is because when we don't have drivers, it's hard to operate field trips.
So because of our problems in the transportation department, children are not being exposed to the, because it looks like it's pretty steady, the number of field trips that students were going on up until this past year.
Right. A lot of schools elect to use a private charter instead of the school bus when, once they call on us.
Okay. Has that been working out well?
It's standard, yes.
Mr. Clon.
And my trick question is, how much do we pay for that?
For?
Private charters?
That we can...
That's a school base, and it's, it's in the student fee. The school district does not pay for private charters.
I'm worried about the school district paying for it.
Just indicating that it, based on the trip.
Right.
There isn't a standard number. It's, are we going to the aquarium in Tampa versus are we going to Kennedy Space Center? It really depends on the length of the trip, how many miles they're going. So there isn't a set, that school works through that process.
So, so perhaps since we, let's assume that we're running the same number of field trips, the transportation department is just providing fewer of, of, of those field trips. We provide the transportation for fewer of those field trips. So perhaps you could get back to us, and you may have to go to the schools to look at what the cost is, of, of what is the cost of utilizing private transportation when schools in the district utilize it, and then we could begin looking at what it's costing us on a per-mile basis or whatever, for us to provide that transportation, because it, it sounds like we've got enough private transportation being provided that we can begin looking about how reliable they are and what their costs are compared to our transportation department. Would that help, Mr. Clon?
Yeah. But what I'm thinking more along the lines of is, if it's a short enough trip, in other words, I'm not talking about Kennedy Space Center, where you need a, a bathroom on, on the bus for the students. But if it's a local trip, why are we not, let's just say they're paying $20 a head to the private transportation company, why don't we just charge them 15 and utilize that money to have more money for the transportation department?
My sense is that...
To pay the drivers more money?
I think what he was saying is transportation department hasn't been able to meet that need because of the number of bus drivers and absenteeism and things like that.
The, the other thing to consider is the timing. There may be a field trip that's scheduled for 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Well, we're, we're right in the middle of elementary delivery at that time, and given the shortage, it's hard to take a driver out of the rotation for that tier.
Yeah, but, but you nearly, you, you, you're showing nearly a 30 percent decrease in field trip transports.
Right.
Over the prior year.
Right.
So I'm assuming that there wasn't a drastic change in the time that the field trips were made in 2017, 18 versus 16, 17.
Yeah, there's, yes. Yes.
Okay.
I'm thinking in terms like, kind of like almost overtime or bonus, or the drivers would be paid more for that trip, there, and you could do it on a rotating basis, so there wouldn't be a lot of favoritism involved. I think drivers would be really happy to get hold of those trips occasionally, if they're getting paid, say, $15 an hour rather than the 13.
Well, they're currently are paid overtime.
So why don't, why, why don't you include that in your, your, your plan?
Okay.
To present to the board, looking at the, the myriad of transportation services that are being exercised in the county, so we can, want to make sure that, that we have a break before the board meeting tonight.
Will do. We broke down safety. School buses are the safest mode of transportation. As you see, the preventable accidents have gone down. The non-preventable have gone up. We looked at cost per mile. We see an increase there. We also see an increase, a slight increase in the cost per student. Our allocations from the state have also gone up for regular ed and for ESE, and our total budget also has increased. Okay. Thank you. So some of the obstacles that we face are traffic, tourism, inclement weather, school bus management, the bus operator shortage, and the ESE units. How we're overcoming those, the plan is to, we've implemented a routing software.
Congratulations.
Yes, VO Now. And what it does is it allows us to have efficiencies in our routing, or in our routes. The routing software actually has planned, and GPS actually provides us the actual, so we're able to make adjustments where we weren't able to do that before. This is a diagram of, this is a diagram of, of how our, our transportation software will work. It incorporates school-based, moving by itself, all of the instruments that we're going to use. We're looked at, right now, the routing software is a single source. It's calendar-based. It allows us plan versus actual. Schools will be provided school-based GPS that'll allow them to look at just their individual school buses for their GPS times. It's accessible through apps or through the PC, and it'll have their student information on that as well. We're loading MDTs onto the school buses for time and attendance. It also will allow us to track ridership to give real-time information, and it also will help us with our FTE, FTE funding, which will hopefully, in most cases, increase our FTE funding. Right now, we do it by hand, and I'm sure that some, there are some errors that are not caught.
Thank you.
So we want to maximize as many profits as we can. Parent app, we're ready to launch that. What it'll do is it provide a rival status to the parents for their buses. It's in real time. It pings every 15 seconds, and it's also available through an app or through web browser. This is an example of what it would look like. This is a time sequence from 30 minutes down to at the stop and then pulling away. We also wanted to briefly go over some of the data for Jane. We can either do that or we can end it now.
For the board members, what's your pleasure? How long do you think it'll take to go through that?
I can rush through it real quick.
Okay.
Okay. So right now, for the three schools, we operate 48 buses. The average arrival time in the morning is 9:00, 8:56 for both Brain River and Hale. We're there, the anchor time is 9:00. So we're there 20 minutes early and 24 minutes before the bell for Brain River and Hale. Our on-time performance is 99 percent. For the overall middle school tier, it's 97 percent. Great. Brain River, the earliest stop is at 8:10, Hale 8:07, and Nolan is 7:40. So we're looking at the average ride times in the far right column. We looked at, for Jane Middle School, how many students are outside the two-mile radius, and right now would be 552 for Committee C, and that would be the ones that we, we recommend. We looked at the total number of students for the three. That's, that, that's including walkers and car riders. That's 3,400, approximately 3,400 students.
Okay. Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right. Any other questions, members? All right. With that, I think we will adjourn today's workshop.